I want to call the meeting to order, verify compliance with open meetings law notification, adopt the agenda. If you can all please stand for the pledge of the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no one registered for item three, so we'll move on to four gifts, donations, and recognitions. A is a 2020 Robotics League Robo Falcons Grant.
Yeah, so, uh...
Your microphone.
Yeah, thank you. So this is a grant that Aaron came in about, I don't know, a month or six weeks ago.
Aaron Smith?
Aaron Smith is our Robotics Club Advisor for our particular purposes right now. He came in a couple of week, about a month ago, asking about this particular grant and how we can make this happen. It's a matching grant, so we work with Dave Pentec on the co-curricular budget to, you know, maybe push ahead some things for the Robotics Club and then be able to obtain this matching grant and really kind of take advantage of some of the dollars that are out there for this particular club. So, Aaron, I know you brought a friend back there, and if you want to just talk kind of just about the Robotics Club. Last week Aaron and I talked and thought it'd be nice to come on in and say a few things about the Robotics Club in general.
Yeah, sure. So, the Robotics Club here at Whitnall is new this year. We just basically started to actually do competitions. Our first competition was on December 7th, and we ranked 24th out of 46 teams. Our Vex Robot back there is a little bit of one of the older generations of robots, and our grant itself was for different costs to the district that would occur from that. So our grant itself was my salary for the school year for being the mentor for the group, and also our biggest expense, which is new robotics equipment. The robot that's back there is actually the older generation. Everybody else from every other district is using the new generation of robotics parts, and so that's actually what we bought using the money that was provided to us. The grant itself is a reimbursement grant, so the school board or the school ponies up the money first, and then we apply to the state, and depending on how many people apply, they determine how much we get back in return. And it's up to $5,000. I believe we got $3,300-ish back this year, which covers the majority of our expenses. The other expenses were also covered with some fundraising with the Booster Club, doing concessions with our robotics students. Do you guys have any questions?
I would love to see the robot closer. Yeah, and I think there's a lot of parent enthusiasm for the robotics program. I've heard good things. And I have also heard that you are going to, your next competition is in February, so...
So I don't know if you play Xbox or anything like that with the kiddos. The controls are pretty, they're based on actual buttons. So we have different buttons. One is for elevating it, one is for opening up the tinsors, and then one is kind of the front and back for the extended arm itself. There's also, students programmed it so that it would drive the two wheels using the two joysticks. So the way it works is that first we have to build it, and then we actually have to have the students themselves program it. So they're learning computer programming. It's basically C++ programming. This one was using Robot C. They've updated with a new brain, and they've kind of changed some coding around, so we're just learning how to do that right now. But it's actually freeware, so it won't cost the school district anything to have that computer programming software on the computers itself.
And then, can you tell us about your competitions, like what you're scored on and how it works?
Sure.
Like, I was watching an episode of BattleBots last night, but I'm assuming it's not quite like that.
If I could do BattleBots, I'm sure I would have 100 people in robotics, so... No, the game itself, or every year it's based off of a game competition with a teammate robot. So the teammate robot is either from our school or from another school. Because we only have one robot at the moment, we just, we end up on a team with another school, basically. And then our game this year is to stack the most blocks into a corner, and then T-score points, and then also we take those blocks and we stack them into these martini-shaped glasses in these towers, basically. And that's used as like a multiplier for a certain color of block.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Ultimately, like when we started the robotics group earlier this year, I had five students, and so we started just building the robot. Right now we have 11 students that are in, kind of enrolled with the robotics program. And so I would like to add a second robot next year. Any other questions?
Thanks very much.
Yeah?
Thank you, thanks Aaron. Move on to B, Edgerton Elementary PTO donations.
I put mint in my mouth, sorry. Good evening. We started this last year where both Lori and I came up and talked to the board about the number of, the financial contribution of our PTOs. Just about everything they do costs over $1,000. So, so we're doing this all at once, but knowing that all of, some of these things happen throughout the course of the year and some have specific dates. So for Edgerton field trips, the PTO gives us $8,000 to be able to run those field trips. We generally have an author or an artist in residence, and depending on where the author or artist or musician comes from, the price changes. So we budget, and they give us around $3,000 for that. Some of you who went to Edgerton over here, football players, you probably remember the classroom parties, right? So we do four classroom parties a year. Those cost money to run, so $3,000 goes to that. We did our all-school zoo trip this year, taking the entire school to the zoo. We tried this in fall, and it was very successful. We were the only school there. So, so I think we're going to talk to Hills Corners about that. That was a lot of fun. We have a kindness retreat for our 4th grade, and we partner up with high school students to be able to do that. We do it here at the high school, and we bring youth frontiers in, and they have a program for 4th graders. So that's $3,500, very impactful though, and it's something that, they give us lessons that then the 5th grade teachers can use with the kids as well, having some common vocabulary. 5th grade trip is our camping trip, which we started three years ago. That's two nights, three days, and that's Camp Uppam Woods in the Dells. And that's between $1,000 to $2,000 depending. Playground equipment was our big one this year. I have already come up and talked with you guys about that, but that one we had to save up for a little bit. Playground equipment wound up costing closer actually to $25,000. I have $24,000 on there. We actually went over a little bit. And then teacher-supported resources are dollars that are given specifically to teachers for classrooms, classroom supplies, and that ranges between $2,500 and $3,200. And then I just bundled a few things together at the bottom. Our picnic, our summer reading, Field Day and Dare, all together costs around $2,000. So, as you can see, minus the $24,000 for the playground equipment, just this alone has an annual budget of about $27,000 that our PTO gives us. So all of those things would not be happening if we didn't have our PTO. And so I have to also give big thanks not only for the people who attend the PTO meetings, who volunteer for events, who run certain events, but also to all of the people who fundraise for our schools. Because without those events and without the fundraising dollars, we wouldn't even have the money to be able to do these things. So from the standpoint of financial, and also from the standpoint of what they bring and how they enrich our school, we're very blessed to have our PTOs. Questions for me? I did such a good job that you have nothing? Okay.
Thanks, Chris. Congratulations. On to C, lunch debt donation.
Yeah, had a call at, parents wanted to donate $500 towards district lunch debt. We have lunch debt totaling a little over $14,000, so these sorts of donations help with that program.
Good, thank you. On to D, recognition of the Whitnall High School football team with Dave and Rob.
Good evening, everybody. This is an extension of last week as well. Unfortunately, last week the football players and Coach Whitek were not able to attend because of their banquet, so we wanted to make sure that we got a good recognition for them as well. So at this time, I'm going to ask Coach Whitek to come on up, and he can speak to the athletes that have shown up as well as to other, some highlights that they had throughout the season.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks for having us today. I apologize we couldn't make it last week, but we had a very successful season. We won our first outright conference championship in the last 20 years, so we created a little momentum, sprung board the program, enrollment increased over 20% from the previous year. So we're really excited about where the football program is heading in the future. Really excited that we have the possibility to possibly see their kids' accomplishments in the future on our new video scoreboard, which our All-On-Board campaign has just recently launched. And we do have a few individuals here that did receive all-conference and additional postseason recognition that I'd like to bring you guys' attention to, so if you guys could just stand up. So on your far left, that's Chase Kujaewa. Chase had a great all-around season here for us. He received honorable mention, all-conference recognition as a utility player. That just recognizes his ability to both make plays with the ball in his hand, whether that is in the return game, as a running back, or as a receiver. So a great, great all-around year for Chase as a junior. Next to him is Jason Gisnechek. Jason received first-team all-conference honors on both offensive and defensive lines. He also received first-team all-southeastern Wisconsin recognition as a defensive lineman, and he plans to go play football at Missouri-South State University. And then next to him, we have Nate Velcarcel. Nate had an outstanding year, broke a lot of different school records, including most rushing yards in the season and touchdowns scored. Nate was Offensive and Defensive Conference Player of the Year, and First Team All-Conference, or First Team All-Area, both offensive and defense, and the first player in the last 20 years to receive First Team All-State recognition by the Wisconsin Football Coaches Association. So that's a really huge accomplishment for him. And then next to him, that's Kenny Duncan. Kenny played defensive end for us, and he actually led the team in ta, or second in the team in tackles, which is a rarity from a defensive line position. But he had a great year and is recognized as honorable mention Defensive Lineman in the Woodland Conference. So we do really appreciate your time. You guys have any questions?
Congratulations.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
You guys can leave now. Thanks for coming. Have a good night. Okay, we need to make one change to the agenda. We need to move item 6C, sponsorship agreement template, up to now so we can do that before the consent agenda. Does anyone have an issue with doing that?
I was going to bring it up if you didn't. Thanks.
Okay, seeing no issues, we'll do item 6C, sponsorship agreement template. I'll take a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or discussion?
Yeah, I mean...
You feel like you're going to say something?
Well, I...
Yeah.
I just want to lay out what's happening here, which is we're approving a template that's going to be used now for every sponsor. So instead of bringing the same contract over and over again and putting it in the board packet, what will happen is in consent agenda, the sponsors will just be recognized in the consent agenda, knowing that we're just handing the same template out, time after time after time. We ran this by legal. We put it and matched it to our board policies. We did have, Karen asked specifically about some language, if there should be an inability, for example, that the scoreboard gets struck by lightning and a game can't have the scoreboard, what does that mean in that particular situation for those sponsors? Our legal took a look and added some additional language that says, hey, if that happens, essentially the business in the district will work together in order to create an alternative time in which advertising will happen. I mean, legal thought that was the most advantageous way to kind of write that in there for the district's standpoint, so...
Is that what was updated later this afternoon?
There was, yes, correct. Yep, there's one paragraph at the very end.
That's what I saw.
In the appendix, yeah.
And question, so where is that? Is that in the packet or is it an attachment or...?
It's in the packets, so it's just one paragraph underneath the appendix A that was added in.
Well, the agreement is a separate deal, isn't it?
Yeah, it's in the board packet. It's a board packet.
It's in the board folder.
It's in the board folder. It's a separate file.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes.
Anything else you want to add?
No.
Anybody have any questions?
I just wondered if there's, is there a time crunch with this that we don't let it sit there for, you know, a few weeks to let the public look at it, or... Okay, what's the time crunch?
So the time crunch is that there are some businesses who would want to make donations prior to year end.
Okay.
And so putting that in place now...
I thought it might be something like that. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. On to five, consent agenda. A is approval of December vouchers and vouchers payable. B is approval of November 25th and December 9th, 2019 school board minutes. C is record of school safety drills. D is acceptance of 2020 Robotics League Grant. E is acceptance of Edgerton Elementary PTO donations. F is partnership agreement scoreboard. Would anyone like to remove an item?
Just the last one.
F, okay. Would anyone else like to remove an item? So then I'll take a motion to approve five, A, B, C, D, and E.
Submoved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. John, go ahead with that.
Yeah, I have no problems with it other than I don't, my opinion is, I don't, I don't understand why this is part of a consent agenda, since it's not something like the, the safety drill record that we just added to the consent agenda recently. These are going to be onesies here or there, and I just don't know why it's part of a consent agenda. I have no problems with the partnership issue itself. I just...
We still have to approve, because it's a donation, right? We still have to approve the acceptance.
I think, John, you're asking why isn't it just a separate item?
Exactly.
I, I think mainly from the standpoint of, over the next five to six months, it is going to be a constant flow, and we figure just put into the consent agenda in that way. Obviously, if there are issues with one, it can certainly be polled, but that, because it's going to be constant flow over the next six months, we just figured consent agenda.
Since each one is different, I just thought it should be separate, that's all.
Different, the contract would be the same, but being the dollar amount?
The, the dollar amount, the sponsor, whatever. I just think that it deserves its own agenda item, not part of a consent agenda.
Okay, noted.
So, your next thing about F is motion to approve, right?
I was going to ask if anyone else has any questions.
Sorry.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, yes, John?
Sub moved.
Okay. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstained?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. On to six, action items. A, hot water system replacement of gaskets and clamps. I'll take a motion to approve.
Sub moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
All right, so, again admittedly...
Todd, do you want to come on?
Yeah, Todd, come on. Hey, the experts here. We ended up getting two more additional quotes late this afternoon. One is two and a half times what we got from the original, and one is almost in half. So a pretty wide spread of dollars. The one that came in two and a half times larger, we, everything's there, and they've accounted for the quickness in which we're asking this to be done. The other quote, we believe, is missing some things that are crucial to what we are trying to accomplish with the quote. So we, Todd, I don't know if you want to take it from there, kind of?
Sure. So I reached out to the company that provided us the lower quote, because it's not an apples-to-apples quote. We got the quote late this afternoon. I didn't get a response back from them to answer the questions of some of the pieces that were missing on their quote that were part of the original Just Service quote. I'll hope to talk to them tomorrow so we can kind of compare and make sure we're apples-to-apples here, because currently we are not.
What's missing?
It's, it's my understanding, the way I read their quote, is that they didn't plan on draining our entire system. They were only going to drain the lines that service the district office. There's quite a substantial amount of containers that we need to hold all this that's in the building. There's a substantial cost to that, to bring in tankers basically to hold it while they drain it. I don't know that they are planning on doing this next week. Because I wasn't here last week, I wasn't able to communicate with them that this is a tight timeline, that we're trying to turn this around next week because of the break. I need to confirm that with them as well. They could have put this price out there just based on scheduling at any point at any time.
So the other two quotes included next week, overtime, getting it done within a short amount of time. The other two quotes list that out. This particular one did not.
Correct.
So we just have a lot of questions with toll mechanical with, whatever. So they can't, we have to follow up on those, on those pieces. It doesn't change the language of the recommendation, which is still to go with the quote that is listed, and then we would work with the other company to see whether this is apples-to-apples and whether they can do it in a timeframe in which we need to have it done. So you see in how, you're pretty much seeing this process in real time as we're working through it, but we need it to be done.
So I have a question. And one of the things that I wonder about with the way that our packets are set up and the way the things are, you know, the board consideration or action sections are written, is it doesn't, I haven't seen them include an actual dollar amount. It just says the quote from vendor XYZ, and then we have to look at the separate document to see the, the amount of that quote. And I'm wondering why we couldn't have the dollar amounts actually in, you know, in the packet so that it's easy to, you know, you don't have to shuffle around.
So sometimes I will include it when we know exactly that we have all of our quotes in order. You, you've come in in a unique time in which the last couple, we have been trying to scramble to get quotes. So when there's something that's done very quickly like this, I'm saying, let's not put it out there. Let's refer to the actual quote itself as we continue to get quotes in. So I've never listed the dollar amount out in this one, and maybe with a plow truck as well, I think was the other one in which I did not list it out specifically in the packet. Typically, I will put the dollar amount out there as in not to exceed X dollars, but these two I have not.
Okay, and so just to confirm for me then, the dollar amount that we're looking at in this specific proposal is 40-something?
It is. So, so last week, we didn't want to put the, we want to put the dollar... Last week we had talked about not putting the dollar amount out there as we, as we get quotes.
Okay. Are you, okay, are you...
So I can't...
Okay.
Do you know what I'm, so, so do you want to put it out there? We, I have no problem putting it out there.
Okay, I just wasn't sure...
So that's why there's not a number in the, in the packet?
In the, in the packet itself, correct.
Okay, okay. That makes sense.
And you're not referring to accepting Just Service quote, you're referring to accepting the...
The dollar they gave us.
To spend no more than...
Correct.
What Just Service quoted us.
Correct, correct.
So then if I understand correctly, if the board goes with this tonight, then you'll figure out between the two, what is the most complete and what serves the district the best?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. It will now be that third quote.
You need the gold plated one?
Right.
But you don't know until you ask, so, you know.
Okay, anybody else? So then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. On to B, 2020-2021 school calendar. I'll take a motion to approve. Sub moved. Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Did anything change from when we saw it last? Nothing at all?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. On to seven, reports. A SWSA report.
So Lisa and I attended this past Tuesday, I believe, yeah? And there was a, so we started out with a short legislative update with our, from our, the, our... What is your name?
Lobbyist.
Lobbyist. Nothing really's changed. Kathy, did you?
Oh, the website.
Yeah, so I just want to show you, if you ever have a desire to see what is pending in the legislation, legislature, you can find it on the website, swsa.com, and if you go to the dropdown that says, I believe, government, all the bills that are in the works, whether they're being, if they're just sitting there, if they're being acted on, they're all there, and they have different languages to what's going on with them. No, it should be up by the top. You should be able to drop down.
Take action.
Is it under news, current legislation? Bill tracker?
Bill tracker. There you go. I'm sorry. So there they all are. All the bills pertaining to education, they're, we're not going to read them, we're not going to go through them, but they're all there, they're all numbered, they're all, the sponsor, and then where they're at and what, how we stand on them. Okay, thank you, Kathy. And that website again is swsa.com. Then we had a gentleman speak, Mr. Rob Assen, UW-Madison professor. He, he spent this past summer going all over the state of Wisconsin and asking questions of all different stakeholders about the dynamics of public education and how schools and communities work together, how the legislator, legislative challenges. And it was, it was, I don't think there was any really earth-shaking news to us. It's pretty much stuff that we know. I think you wrote a few things down. But it, it got a perspective of many different people across the state. You know, one thing that I, that I thought about, because they talked about how we bring the community into our district, and I, and I thought, well, do we really? Well, we do. We have sporting events, we have concerts, we have craft shows, we have all different things going on in a district that outside people come in and are a part of the district. So we do. And then at the end of the meeting, we brokered from the groups and discussed all the different things that went on with the, about the speaker. And I would believe soon we're going to have our, there were some talking points up there on the webpage. We're going to be really focused on, on our talking points as to, because the binanium budget will be coming up pretty soon. We'll be working on it shortly, and we want to be ahead of the game and want to be helping all legislators know where we're coming from. Next month, we have the state superintendent, Ms. Taylor, going to be at the meeting, and then the following meeting, I'm not, I don't think Representative Boss. Just what she said there, I think we're going to have some different lobbyists panel there in February. So if you want, if you want to meet the state superintendent, come next, I think it's like the...
January 7th. January 7th.
January 7th? I won't be there. I thought it was the week after. So, I've met her. She's a nice lady. She's been in the school business for a long time. She knows the playing field. She knows what the politics are going on, and she knows what the... She comes from, she was the director of special education, I believe, for DPI for many years before taking this position when Tony Evers... she comes from, she was the director of special education, I believe, for DPI for many years before taking this position when, uh, Tony Evers became governor. So unless Lisa has anything. That's it.
Okay, thank you. On to B, school board, PTO and liaison reports. I think we had any meetings.
We had a meeting, you know, it was, it was very short, uh, which was really nice. The one thing that I, that I really, really thought was important and, and Chris talked about, um, school safety. And while it's not an easy subject to talk about and things have transpired recently in our area and, uh, you know, I, I think the parents that were there, uh, really, really appreciated it, um, it was a very frank talk. Um, we have some things coming up on Tuesday, I believe, we have something coming up on Tuesday, a holder, I don't know what it was, forget. But it, it's important that we, we continually talk to our kids, our parents, and we always have to have awareness of what's going on as it is. And I thought, Chris did a nice job in doing that, that really was the highlight of the meeting, so that's all.
Music boosters met a little over a week ago, um, there were, their biggest discussion at that meeting was talking about, um, trying to come up with scholarships for, uh, students who wanted to participate in either honors bands or other music programs, summer music programs. And trying to come up with a system that's fair and try and figure out how to work that out. Um, the Falcon booster meeting was at the same time as the board meeting, so I didn't go to that.
Can I report something from that? Can I report for that?
Sure.
Okay. Um, the Booster Club is doing something called the Arrive Alive and that's gonna be on Friday, May first. And so they, they sponsored a speaker for the whole school this last fall, this next spring they're doing that. And it's for juniors and so working with administration, it's going to be for any junior who wants to attend prom. They will have to have gone through this and so it's scheduled throughout the day. Um, and for students who are absent during that, it's about texting and driving, so it's a simulator, I think it's ten minutes per student. They actually, they go in a simulator and it simulates that. And so the completion of that is sort of their validation to get into prom type of thing. And for students who can't make it, there's gonna be an alternative thing, just understand the dangers of texting and driving and that prior to prom. So that's, they, they spent a lot of time and they've confirmed that. Um, and again, one of our alum, um, an insurance agent, um, is also helping sponsor that event also, so. They've been spending a lot of time on putting that together. And then their fundraiser, which is, is the Falcon Fest, which will be on February twenty ninth, on that Saturday, which is a wine tasting event at Clifford's.
Thank you. HC doesn't meet until January twenty first.
Okay. And middle school did not meet yet this month, so. Okay, all right. On to C, legislative and advocacy, Quinn, do you have anything to?
We actually have two things, um, Karen had brought up a desire to have some information about, um, marijuana legislation and, uh, let me see here. Where's it, Karen? And, uh, and drug prevention, right? So basically what, I think what Karen, what you're asking for is a report from the district as to where we, what type of prevention we have, what, um, do we have speakers come in, do we have, uh, dogs, do we have, uh, I don't know, call them shakedowns, but what do they, they?
Lock of search is whatever.
There you go.
Search.
Yeah, so, um, if we could have that in, in the next month or two, that'd be awesome.
A written report, you mean on what the curriculum looks like for drug prevention?
What, yeah, what do we do, what does the district do?
What's our program overall?
Right, yeah, and then.
Drug education prevention.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, given that legalization is coming to Illinois, you know, we think that there, it's a very high likelihood that there will be more drugs coming into Wisconsin. And then I don't know if our local law enforcement has any recommendations or thoughts about that. So just kind of what, what are we doing to be prepared and what is our overall plan?
Now that, I don't know if we have a plan.
I, no, no, right, so, but we, if we have what we've been doing, that's great. And then just knowing, you know, looking into the future and seeing this move toward legalization, what are we doing as a school? Or?
It would be, it would be in our policies, what I, I believe, our policy would lead us.
So just a review would be great.
Of our policies towards drugs in the schools.
Beyond just referencing the policies that may outline, or you wanna know what we're doing beyond that, right?
It depends if the board is interested in it or not, but.
It all depend, I guess I'm trying to get a more specific understanding of what you're asking for, um, to determine if that'd be something I'd wanna look into. I guess you just kinda said, what are we doing with it, I?
Sure, so the community, I, I feel that the community has an interest in keeping our schools drug free.
I think everybody does.
Correct, knowing, knowing that there is a likelihood of greater, um, supply, does that change anything for us, I guess is the question. And then, or can we review what we're doing and, and, uh, and see?
Doesn't change my mind, I still don't want drugs here.
I know, and but, so.
So you, you're looking more preventative measures.
Prevention, yes, thank you.
And, so, when we, when we talk this afternoon, so would we wanna contact the police chief of Greenfield or Hills Corners to see what, what, I, I don't, I mean, I didn't know if they could tell us anything, I didn't know.
I think it would be a great resource to reach out.
Why are we discussing this under this topic, I guess is my first question.
What's the question, Nancy?
I said, why are we discussing this under a legislative and advocacy report?
Well, we'd be advocating for the district.
But you're giving a report, it's not a report, that would be more under items for future consideration.
Okay. I'm okay with that. So we'll leave it at that, so we can get a gist of what Karen is looking for. The other thing is, um, tomorrow night is the, uh, City of Greenfield Plan Commission in regards to the development, uh, behind the middle school. And do, does the board wanna have a presence there? An official presence, any member is wel, welcome to go, it's at seven o'clock.
So there's the public hearing at seven PM at Greenfield City Hall for anyone who has an interest in that project and its impacts.
Correct, and they can speak, tomorrow's the time that they can speak. I know that we have sent a letter.
Yeah.
To the common council.
And a response from the mayor and Alderman Castner, I was spoken with also based upon that letter, cause he had just asked about that, so.
We, you, did you get a response?
Yeah, he just said, thank you, got it, there will be a traffic study. I mean, it was sort of a receipt of it, you know, as per shared at the meeting, there will, the, the city's requiring a traffic. Now, they haven't approved it yet, but they said that that's one of the requirements, so it was like, thank you, got it.
So they haven't approved the development yet, they're still studying.
It's been approved by the plan commission and then it's, the next step would be for it to be voted on by the entire common council. But they're having the public hearing before it goes to the common council.
It hasn't officially gone through.
Plan committee doesn't approve, they move forward a recommendation, they don't take a vote.
Correct.
So the plan commission is moving forward a recommendation for the council to appro, to vote on it.
What's the recommendation?
To move forward with the project.
And rezoning, so they're rez, rezoning from single family to like, um.
Multi.
P U D something, yeah. So I was thinking of possibly attending whether, probably as an individual, um, tomorrow night is also the high school choir concert. So I am not sure if I will personally be there or not.
Well, I mean, I think we, we sent the letter on behalf of the board to let our feelings know, I don't know that we need to have an official presence there to speak on it, I think we've shared our, our thoughts on that and obviously we don't have all the information based on the traffic study and whatnot. So maybe soon for us to make a determination on that, that, that's my feeling on it, but.
Lisa, do you plan attending?
I am attending.
You are?
So I am not able to attend, but I do think that though the letter is good that, that we sent, I, I think that to, when you, when you wanna make sure they know you're serious about something, you, you show up and speak if you can. You know what I mean? So I, I would like to, us to have a presence there, but I'm not able to provide that.
I agree.
I think it is a show to residents that we do have concern. I don't think they know that we sent the letter, I don't think that, it might be referenced during the meeting, I don't, I wouldn't, I believe it wouldn't be referenced.
Yeah, I don't know if they call into record, you know, sometimes there, it's certain things like read into record, how many letters have been sent for or against, I don't, I don't know enough.
That was one option too, that you could send in your, your thoughts or your opinions, or you could speak up to them.
Yeah, I think from a point of view of gathering more information, if there's more information or details that come out during that meeting, it might be interesting to bring some note ba, notes back from that, or just to have someone from here available to hear.
Say it sounds like Lisa's already gonna be.
Exactly, yeah.
Um, but my question is, do you have to be a Green, is it Greenfield City Council meeting, don't you have to be a Greenfield resident to speak at this?
No.
Hmm.
They have been in the past, Nancy and I, I, when Nancy and I attended the first, it was.
I'm not a Greenfield resident, so I don't wanna speak at that.
I think so. They were before, but this could be different, I'm just telling you the other ones that I've attended in the past, this could be different, I'm not.
My understanding is that the project is partially in Greenfield and partially in Hills Corners, the roadway is in Hills Corners. So I don't know for sure, but I expect, I, I know a Hills Corners resident who's planning to attend and so, yeah.
I'm just saying, that might be something to look out for, if you are going, you're not a Greenfield resident, I mean, you might not be able to talk, so.
And just to clarify, as I've done in the past, I've not spoken on behalf of the district. I may have asked a question to clarify, but I don't take a position, I'm just there to gather information and to have a presence so people know that the district is there gathering information, just to clarify for anybody.
And then you've always shared that information.
And then I'll see, right.
Well, it might be time to express a opinion, an opinion in, in public.
If the board directs me, I will, I'm just letting you know that I don't typically express a public, uh, be, you know, on behalf of that without that.
I don't think there, there's gonna be a lot of information to gather, other than people giving their opinion.
Yes.
And I think the people that are gonna give their opinion are gonna be very concerned about the traffic.
Wouldn't hurt if we were one of them.
Mm-hmm, I, I, I agree with that.
Could it be as simple as we read the letter?
I think so, yeah, I think that that was.
It's not a bad idea.
The whole, I mean, everyone took a look at that and so it is agreed upon as the entire board. So that to me seems the most appropriate statement, if any is made.
So who, um?
This, I, this.
Yeah.
Again, the Greenfield residents here.
I'd be happy to go with, with Lisa.
Okay.
And I have a previous commitment at six, but I, I should be able to get there by seven.
Anyone else plan on going?
I mean, I signed it too, so it's not like I'm reading, my signature was on the letter too, so it's not like it was the.
Well, I don't wanna, if you weren't, yeah.
Yeah, I, yep. I've, I've attended before, but I can't go to my line.
I think if nothing else, if you just say the, the, s, Whitno School District and Board of Education submitted this letter, we'd like to read it as our official statement.
So then, who's gonna read it? Cause if I, cause you're the only one that can speak for the board.
No, either of you two can read the letter.
It's just, you're just reading the letter.
Cause it was, right, it was sent, then, then in that case, if we're just reading it, making a different statement, then you're fine.
So I'll, I'd be happy to meet you there, Lisa.
Okay, yep.
If you can't make it in time, there's no problem with her reading it.
Yeah, no, I can.
Better if you as a board member read it, I think.
I'd just be there, it, it'll be seven when I get there.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Anything else on that? Okay, thank you. On to eight items for future consideration. Karen?
You already have it, right? So we, I'd like to talk about, um, uh, drug prevention and what our.
Yeah, I'd like to know what program, or what our program for education and prevention entails and if we're doing anything, if we're, if we have any idea on preparation for the concerns of, of, uh, the Chicago or the Illinois, Illinois state law change, which by the way does not change federal law, so what Illinois is gonna do is illegal, but that's okay. It's up to them. I can deal with it.
Anybody else?
Let me just say, for future consideration, can we talk, or have a discussion about how we wanna handle those items in the future? Um, just because it might be, I might bring something up and nobody else wants to talk about it, but we're not having a discussion about it. And then whether or not it gets brought up, I don't know. So if we can have, try to discuss a formalized process of how we go about future items. Um, so that we can have it consistent so that we know, like, yep, everybody wants this, or it's just one person, or it's just a memo.
Yeah, I think we'll, um, we can reference back to the policy that's in place, we've used in the past.
Sure.
But yeah, that's, that's, that's good.
So can I clarify on this item, since it's in the, we're, it's, it's going to be a board agenda or it's a written report to the board? Are we using FaceTime or a report?
That's kinda what I always wanted to know too.
Yeah, sometimes the information is just to get the board information, but it isn't necessarily FaceTime in a meeting. So I just wanna clarify on this specific item, what the, what the board's requesting.
Why don't we, yeah, why don't we start with a report or memo and then if there are additional questions on that, then we can discuss, is that fair?
I think that's fine, you know, the only other thing I was thinking is that I think they keep the community, I personally think that the community has an interest in this topic. And so that it might be something that the public would be interested in knowing more about.
And we could make a.
And that could happen in a variety of ways, so.
Yeah, we could make a memo available, we've done on the past for the topic, so that is an option, so we'll, we'll work on that offline and go from there. Okay? All right, anybody else? Okay, on to nine announcements.
I just wanna give another shout out to the robotics team because they did have a real successful showing in Manasha, especially given that they're a new team with a new instructor and they were really delighted with how that worked out, so yay. And I loved the demonstration today. And then, uh, for the music program, the choir concert is tomorrow night, I believe it's at seven PM.
The Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, uh, came out with a hundred, top one hundred athletes for the past, for this decade. And we had two of them in there, at number twenty-two was Tyler Hero and at number ninety-one was Haley Wynn. I'd like to congratulate them, their parents, uh, all their, all their teammates, their coaches all along and everybody supported them. And I'm gonna blow my own horn, Haley was on my team for two years as well as, uh, little Emma. And I have two from that team, two girls, Haley and Abby Cunningham that got D one scholarships, so.
Cool, where?
And we never won the championship.
What does that mean?
Well, I'll, I'll tell you later, because it's.
So they succeeded in spite of your coaching?
I was a very liked coach.
I'd also like to give a shout out to the Whitno Middle School Girls Basketball Team. I think it might be the eighth grade team who are having a really great season and having a lot of fun.
Anybody else have announcements?
Um, I look forward to seeing everybody at the swim meet on Wednesday.
Where's that?
It's at Greenfield, but it's our home meet, so that goes to show what kinda pool we have.
Um, uh, anybody else have any, I've got a couple. No? Um, I won't be at the swim meet on Wednesday because there's a wrestling.
Yeah, I know, I was gonna double dip and then we changed venues, so I was gonna go.
Yeah, um, they're actually doing for the first time a wrestling program night. Uh, they moved the middle school duel from right after school to seven o'clock. So the middle school duel will go because we're facing Greendale, who is our co-op team, and then varsity will go as well. Um, so it's kind of a cool experience for the parents to see their, you know, Whitno, Greendale face each other in middle school and then the co-op team face Carahay. And the team is actually off to a nine and one start so far this year and they won a tournament last weekend. And then this past weekend won the consolation bracket, another tournament, so, pretty exciting.
Side note to what, I'm sorry, if you continue.
No, go ahead.
Side note to what you said about the list, I think we got screwed on a couple people there.
Joel Stavi, yeah?
Uh, Rachel Stavi, won three state championships and took second and won in diving and she didn't even get an honorable mention, so robbed.
There you go.
I also am unable to attend the swim meet Wednesday, I'm working, so, uh, you're allowed to.
There you go. And then I just wanna recognize the, uh, band concerts, so Edgerton and the middle school both had their concerts in the high school auditorium. Uh, it was a really cool experience, the kids really had a blast being up on the auditorium stage in the high school instead of just the, you know, the elementary school gym or whatnot. And I wanna give the, the teachers a lot of credit, so the element, Edgerton music teacher brought in her family members to run the lights and sound and all that. And, um, the middle school streamed their performances live. Um, so my mom could watch in Chicago, she was very happy about that. Um, so, uh, thank you to them for doing that, cause obviously that's extra time and extra thought and we really appreciate it. And then the last one, um, high school calendar, uh, it's gonna be coming before the board in January as an FYI. Again, for policy, we don't vote on intraday schedule changes, um, we're not changing the official start time or bus times or anything like that, so won't be anything to vote on, but the administration will be bringing it forward, uh, to lay out their plans for next year, so just as an FYI. Okay, anybody else have announcements?